...for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Tealander.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Okay.
At this time, I would like to take nominations for the position of Mayor.
I nominate Mike DeBoer.
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations? All right, at this time, I would declare the nominations are closed and ask for a motion to elect Mike DeBoer as Mayor.
So moved, seconded.
On to roll call, Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
And at this time, I'd like to congratulate Mayor DeBoer, and I'm turning the meeting over to you.
Thank you. And now, I will take nominations for Mayor Protown.
I'd like to nominate Jim Hodges.
I would respectfully decline the decline, and I really appreciate that, but it's time for someone else.
I'll nominate Alan Tealander.
I'm in support.
Any other nomination? If you consider nominations closed, I'll look for a motion to appoint Alan Tealander as Mayor Protown.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Sue, a roll call.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Congratulations, Alan. And now, we will review and adapt council rules of procedure.
I don't know how you want to close, because we've got in our packet here, and it's a copy of what we worked through last year. To kind of, with our new city manager, we've kind of shuffled a little bit with the agenda items, and under item two, agenda preparation, as well as then the sequence, I would like to, I think, adjust our sequence so it brings our agenda more back into order. Not that we're doing things wrong, but we'll make the rules right. Anyway, so that we would have the A as the call to order, Pledge of Allegiance roll call, and item B would be our consent agenda, combining B, C, and D of agenda minutes and accounts payable. Item C would be citizens' discussion or comments, D, old business, E, new business. Let's see, we flip-flop, so that board and commission reports would be F, monthly reports would be G, and then, let's see, manager's report is H, appointments to council and commissions would be I, and followed then by the council comments, executive session, and adjournment. That would bring things into line as far as current agenda, so dictates.
Need four.
If that's a agreement under those.
Yes.
I like that. How about where we have? I don't know if we go under three persons addressing the council or request to speak during citizen discussion, but if we're going to do comments at the end of every agenda item, will people, we limit that to one trip off at the end?
You mean during the presentation of agenda items?
Right, if they would comment on a certain agenda item.
What you could do is just have them approach the podium and the mayor, chairperson, recognize them, and as it says in our rules later here, that people can address the council upon recognition of the chair. That keeps things in order of the board and the patch.
That'll be under number six next. Request to speak during regular agenda items?
Correct, yes. With that, I would also, as we jump ahead to item E, citizen participation, find that on page number, yeah, about six, six or seven? Item E, citizen participation general. Again, a year ago, we switched from citizen comments to citizen discussion, where we got in, where we, sometimes we'd get into quite a back and forth with citizens. Old school here, I had proposed going to citizen comments, where we receive comment of citizens, which is required by state law, but that we just receive the comments and then that we can, in turn, get back to citizens with information, rather than dealing from an emotional moment and given, we're able to find facts and figures and help have accurate presentation, but it's important to receive citizen comments.
I agree.
And so then, the, under item E, number one, general, discussion, we change to comments. Similarly, under item five there, during citizen comments. And under item two. What if, if you, if you, if you get with that, I've got one more thing.
Get it.
And that would be, under item two, that citizens be given a minimum of five minutes to speak during the discussion times, public hearings, and public comment, but that we strike the issue of a person representing a group and speaking on behalf of any group, be allowed 10 minutes to address the council.
And make it five, a person or.
Just eliminate that sentence.
Sure.
And I think that would clear things up, and.
This is a toss-up between.
Between and the sergeant-at-arms, and that is, if the next sentence there is, "The clerk shall notify the chair when time has expired," and my experience has been generally, I believe that the sergeant-at-arms has been the timekeeper on these things, and so maybe we would just change the clerk to sergeant-at-arms.
On the front page, A number one, does anybody have any objections or thoughts on changing that 7:00 PM start time to 6:00 PM start time? That's when a lot of the other meetings start, and I think it'd be easier for the people who work to stay until 6:00 instead of 5:00, since Mike and Sue, Steve, Steve, Rich are all here. People can stop on their way home, instead of having to go all the way home first and then come back to home.
I don't have a personal issue with that, many of our other boards do to get it 7:00 o'clock. Boy, back in, back in the day, the city charter had us starting at 8:00, and that's so that some of the good old boys could go out and have their cocktails before they came to council. But that was another time, and then.
That was another option.
Well, anyway, but, we won't name names, but we know where they were, and, but now we went to 7:30, and then just about two, three years ago, we went to 7:00 o'clock. But it depends on what might be good for the community, too, because we do want citizen participation, so I, it doesn't matter to me, but I would, but I would lean to keeping it at 7:00 myself. What's that, Mr. Beecham?
Eric.
Hi, Perry Beecham, 924 Riverside. I think for the public, again, somebody that might be living in Lowell but working in Grand Rapids or working outside, that wants to attend these, you know, it gives them a chance to get home, have dinner with their family, and then come to a city council meeting, so I think it behooves you to stay at the 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.
And we will, everybody's in favor of leaving it at 7:00, so.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the rules of procedure as commanded.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Here is, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Of course. Citizen discussion for the last time.
My name's Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive, and the current chairman of the Lowell Light and Power Board. This is just basically, again, a comment. The ledger, in an article dated Wednesday, December 21st, stated, in that Lowell Light and Power spent $728,602.54 on upgrades to the building for the biodigester. That was FOIA'd, the ledger FOIA'd that information, and that also Lowell Light and Power invoiced LEED for $1,305,419 and some odd cents, which would indicate that Lowell Light and Power made a profit of $547 million, or, excuse me, $547,000. These numbers didn't add up to what I thought was correct. I talked with Steve Donkersloot, the general manager of Lowell Light and Power, and he confirmed my suspicion. I then went to John Jacobs of the Ledger and talked to him about my concerns. Since then, there was an article in the, the next week's ledger stating what the actual was, and we actually invoiced $584,695, so again, just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. The article, the clarification, which ended up being on page four, talked about, talked about the, what they had added up wrong, the ledger, and again, why I bring that up is because in that same ledger, there was an article written from Mr. Jim Howard, and implies that the city, LEED, Lowell Light and Power, that there's some kind of conspiracy out there. He had stated, that his last statement was, "Hopefully, the new city council will handle it, handle it honorably and bring out all the facts." Well, I just want to point out that the board of Lowell Light and Power, we brought this discrepancy to the ledger, we're not trying to hide anything from, from the citizens of Lowell Light and Power, we want everything to be above board, honest, and again, the board's doing the best job that they can for the repairs of Lowell Light and Power. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Jim?
Jim Salzweil, 505 North Jefferson. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys for the upcoming year, I'm looking forward to some new exciting things that are happening, but one of the things that were hitting me last year, and I really don't know what has been happening this year, and that's our streets in Lowell. I know this year, we have a budget spent to repair Jefferson, I think that's good until maybe June of this year, so I'm hoping that that is still on the agenda to get that street repaired this year. And my second one, what is your next thing to look at getting our streets repaired for the 2017, 2018 budget, if you give it any consideration? I'm not looking for answers tonight, but hopefully at the next couple of meetings, I'll come up and ask again, and hopefully we got a plan towards that, but again, congratulations, and looking forward to working for 2017, thanks.
Thank you. Somebody else? All right, old business, biodigester update.
Just a quick update on where we're at, from our meeting on December 1st. The, myself, Steve Donkersloot, C Attorney, we have met with representatives from Lowell AD to start discussing the actions that have been taken by the city council and Lowell Light and Power moving forward. We are currently still meeting with them, we're going to be meeting with them again this week to try and come more of a resolution toward issues. They are in the process currently of seizing the operations. This past week, they did do maintenance repairs to eliminate the order. They do plan on doing what they can, they do plan on eliminating the order, and they are doing that. The, the issue as to whether or not we're going to be able to amicably agree, that is still the issue that we're still working on resolving, and we're going to be meeting this week. I suspect we're probably going to have to have a joint meeting of the city council and the Lowell Light and Power Board here in the very near future, but at this point, that's where we're at with this.
I'm ready to speak at all, Lighthouse.
I will keep that, I will, I will address that. We have been meeting with Lighthouse. There are ancillary issues pertaining to closing the biodigester with their, with their property and with the way they, they have to remove the waste from their site. They rely solely on the biodigester and taking their waste, on releasing their waste from their site, and that is an issue that we are working, working through. It's been made apparent to them, it's been made very aware to them, that the biodigester is not an option, and we are trying to work through those issues at this time. Actually, I'll be meeting with Lowell, with Lighthouse later this week, along with LEED in our, in our meeting later this week, and we will also be, I will also be holding a meeting with them and Michigan Economic Development Corporation to see if the MEDC can assist them with some of their, with some of their, the new operational issues and challenges that have come up for them.
Thank you. Any discussion? New business, authorization of city bank accounts. There's a memo in the packet, lists all the banks and the required signatures. Repentant motion would be that we approve the annual authorization for city bank accounts and designation of depository banks as proposed.
Can I make that motion?
No, seconded.
Discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Item B, Grand Rapids Community College summer property taxes.
It's a procedural thing, and, you know, I, I'd make motion that all city council approve the request of Grand Rapids Community College to collect the 2017 summer property taxes for the district at no fee in exchange for retaining earned interest while the monies are deposited in the city accounts.
I'll support. Discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. How about resolution of support and approval of submission of an application for permission to locate a new permanent structure on the showboat piling to the flag.
In front of you is a resolution. The city is going to be submitting a, a permit request with the Michigan Department of Environment and Quality and the Army Corps of Engineers for the showboat, and we would need a, we would need a resolution of support from the city council to allow us to move forward with that application. The city, city staff, along with city residents and the Chamber of Commerce have been working for a long period of time to try and start making plans to restore the showboat, and this is a, this is a positive step into that direction with this resolution.
I make motion that we pass the resolution, oh, one dash, one seven.
And I support. Discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Item D, Resolution 217, performance resolution for governmental agencies.
It was brought to my attention through MDOT when we applied for our annual permit for our parade's banners and musical on Main Street, that our resolution was severely out to date, and we needed to pass an updated resolution. Sorry, and it's my recommendation that we pass this updated resolution.
I make that motion, that, and it's quite lucky to hear, but that we passed the resolution, we asked to present it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Item D, bow hunting on 10 acres of private land.
Recently, there was a request by a local resident about consideration to revise ordinance 13-112. Currently, the ordinance allows for hunting with a bow and arrow on property in the city where the owner possesses 10 acres or more. The ordinance prohibits the use of crossbows at this time. The resident is requesting that the crossbow prohibition be stricken from the ordinance. I discussed this matter with Chief Bukla, and he has no concerns with the request. However, before we were to present an ordinance in front of you at a future meeting, I wanted to at least have a discussion with the city council on this matter, if there was any concerns by the council.
My experience in the past has been that, again, we lean heavily towards our police recommendations, but also, should this prove to be a problem, we can always reenact it, so I'm, I'm good with it. I mentioned, still need to talk to Dick and.
Yeah, we just have to revive the ordinance.
Work the ordinance.
And I've talked, I've talked to Dick about it, I mean, if the council wishes to go in that direction, there's no concern with that.
I'm good with it.
I am as well. Everybody?
Yes.
Discussion on food trucks.
Recently, there was an incident where a food truck was at a business in the downtown district, and there was some concern by other restaurateurs pertaining to the food truck being able to serve in the district. Biggest concern was that these businesses are coming into the downtown, not paying city taxes and making a profit while in the city. I'm in agreement with them on this, that, on this issue, and when I began researching this, I learned that our ordinance does not allow this currently. However, I think it's necessary to have a discussion with the city council on future direction on this matter. Food trucks are becoming much more popular in mainstream and downtowns across the United States. They are becoming a very important part of vibrant downtowns, and many cities nationally have been able to manage these issues, along with addressing the concerns about fairness with the current food service providers in a downtown district. I think it's necessary to have a discussion on this. The, we have a new business in downtown that has been doing this, and I can tell you for a fact, food trucks are very popular. Personally, I like food trucks, and I think, especially in a situation like a microbrew or something like that, a lot of microbrewers are out there that they actually don't sell food, they actually do have food trucks, and they complement each other very nicely. And many downtowns have these things, so they are, and, and quite frankly, the food truck lobby, the food truck associations now are becoming much more prevalent, and I don't, I'm concerned that with the ordinance that currently has written that there's going to be, there's going to be a fight by these groups, and I think we probably need to look at the ordinance again and take into account the, you know, take into account the concerns of the business owners that are here, because that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate issue, but I think it's something that I don't think you can just completely outlaw going forward, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna cause, it's gonna cause a lot of issues, I think, for the, for the city by just completely outlawing it. So, that's, that's kind of where I, where I'm starting this discussion at, but I'm willing to have council, discussion with the council on this.
I think the easiest thing might be, might reinvent the wheel, to look to our friends in neighboring communities, Cedar Springs, Sparta, Rockford, the others, and see what they may have already in place. Personally, boy, it's quite an issue. We've got great paying tax, we've got some terrific restaurants here, some restaurants that really attract people in from out of town. It's always better to receive other people's money than be exchanging our own, but, and our businesses pay, pay taxes.
I agree.
Depending on what fees would be, again, health issues with health department inspections, insurance, hold harmless, yada, yada, local vendor permits, and those kind of things, and then parking restrictions, and it takes away from parking, there are a lot of questions there, so I, I think rather than, you know, tearing things all apart and getting all excited, if we look and see what some other communities have, draw on their experience, and maybe tweak a little bit here, here and there. Of course, the other side of it, like this, can I set, can I put up a beer truck in front of Little Caesar?
Well, paddle pubs are more popular nowadays, I mean, they're, they're, they're around.
What do we do right now?
Something from our retire. Pubs are popular.
What do we do right now as far as the carnival food, like Riverwalk, Fair Week? Do they pay?
I think Steve can answer a question a little bit.
Those are tied to a community event that usually goes through the chamber, if I'm, Liz is in the back, who usually take care of the food trucks for the event for Riverwalk. I will point out that not this last year's farmer's market, but the year prior, there was a food truck there that was there weekly, and that was, again, it had to be tied to a community event specific to our ordinance. And I did get copies of other ordinances, if you have any questions, so I can give you some of the highlights if you'd like.
That'd be great.
City of Grand Rapids is a $2 million insurance provider with a hold harmless policy for the city, and license is good for one year for one vehicle, it's non-transferable, so if they have multiple vehicles, they have to get multiple licenses. I did not get their fee schedule, but fees for any other cities range from $50 up to $1,000. The one city that does the $1,000 licensing fee for one year said it was to keep the riffraff to a minimum, so you're not having the low-quality food that you were concerned about, Mr. Hodges, and that those people are earning an honest business. So they're gonna put up that kind of money, they're gonna.
Do you have any idea what they do as far as the health department inspection?
I believe that's all done through the Cancom Health Department, I can, again, that's, I have those specific questions for the city of Grand Rapids, and I am not receiving those back yet.
Yeah, so I'm thinking of dealing with that recently, too.
I had the opportunity to speak to the attorney today about that. He was, his office was, was involved in drafting that ordinance in Grand Rapids, and one of the big things that they had, obviously, do is they actually directed air, they actually created areas as to where the food permits, the food trucks could operate, they did allow for them to be on private property, there was limited areas into the right of way. One of the, one of the reasons, one of the things with licensing with them was they charged a very nominal amount for the licensing, and the, and the reason that is, is because in Grand Rapids, they have a very rapid city income tax, which we do not have. So, the, the licensing issue was, was a nominal fee because of, because of that premise, so the argument, the argument there was, well, they're paying taxes if they're, if they're doing business in the city, especially if they're licensed and all that, so it's something that definitely have to, I personally, the idea of $1,000, I think is palatable. I think there's a way to tier, tier permitting process, where you do it maybe for a special event, for maybe a monthly, and, and maybe for an annual permit, but you, you do it in a way where you don't, you know, you make, you make the vendor pick a license, not go, okay, this month, I'm gonna go with this license, and then this month, I'm gonna do another monthly license. You have to do it in a way, I think that, that I think is, is manageable, and that's something that I, I mean, that's something that I think if you're gonna do this, you, you need to take that into account. Now, I understand that licensing, licensing fees are for cost associated for the government entity to, to do, to do business, you can't necessarily consider them as a tax, but I, like I said, I, I think that as, as this goes around, I think we just, we need to research this a little bit more, and probably even have to address this with the planning commission and have, have them looking at it from zoning issues and so forth.
Roger. Roger Luair, 681 Virtuett Court. One of the things I was thinking about, as, as I knew we were going to be talking about this, is I know that we're concerned in, in working towards downtown development, and I'm wondering if we can tap any resource of data that will give us. I'm wondering if we can tap any resource of data that will give us some picture as to the effect that food truck support, you know, when a community supports having food truck and what that may do to the clientele and the income for resident businesses. Think, and the reason I'm raising that question is because I know that we always have a lot of fear that comes first, you know, and that's the first thing we deal with is, is fear that something new is going to interrupt and destroy what we have and all of us enjoy the familiarity of our own securities. So I know it can tip that way, but I think if we could have some data that, and I think there's enough around that we may be able to get that. And yet, I think also looking at the fact that I know when we brought new restaurants, resident restaurants, more than just the taxes and that they bring a clientele into our community. And we've seen that a number of times in my tenure in this community and so I would like the idea of checking the data and then seeing if we could create, if we're gonna do this, if we can create a way that it really is beneficial to the, what we plan for our downtown as we go forward. And so I just wanted to join that in the conversation.
Do you need to stand up to talk amended or no? I'm Blair.
At the podium.
Everybody knows me.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just not a big public speaker, but.
Hang on Blair, he's coming with us.
Okay. I'm sure I can't hear you guys, so you need one of these. Anyway, Roger's going, let's get some data. I can give you data. If you bring somebody in with a truck and they sell food, every person in that town that built their building, pays their taxes, does all this stuff, didn't sell something that night. There isn't gonna be a flock of people like, you apparently love truck food. Hey, that's good. Do you go anywhere particular to buy truck food?
Downtown Detroit.
Down, quite often because you live right here in Lowell, so you go.
When I lived on the other side of the state, if I was in downtown Detroit, I would go to food.
But when's the last time you ate off a truck?
This summer.
This summer? And it was good?
Yeah.
Hunt the permit, checked it all out, you were, you looked through the window, saw everything was.
They had, they had the permits.
Right up to code, I'll bet.
They had the permits.
I didn't ask you that, I said, did you look in the window?
Well, I'm sure that I'm going to a restaurant.
Looked in the window of what was down at that truck this couple of weekends ago and, you know, you're gonna have to do more than get some facts and figures of how you're gonna benefit any restaurant selling food by bringing wheels to meals in here and selling food. There isn't any data. It just plain screws the people that have businesses in this town. They're not gonna go have food at the truck and then go over to the barbecue place and have barbecue. And they're not, you know, maybe they'll go to Larkins and have a drink, that would be great, I'd love it if Mikey got some business out of it, but, you know.
Sir, there's a number of vibrant downtowns nationwide that have food trucks.
We're not vibrant, we're a little old town that you're trying to make a vibrant downtown. We don't sell crab legs in this town, you know, we're a little home farm town and, you know, you guys aren't gonna change it. It's been that way forever. I've been here 70 years, we sell meat and potatoes, you know, and it's just insane. I didn't even work up to that.
You guys watching?
Hello, my name is Tyler Belting, four hundred West Main, New Union Brewery. I want to thank you guys first of all for the community's support and many other people in the community have just been wonderful and thank you for that. I want to comment on the previous comment, your comment.
You or me?
No, no, this gentleman here.
Alright.
On that note, we've had people already in here, we've been open six weeks, I think now, this week, our seventh week, from Warren, Michigan, Lansing, Michigan, Grand Haven, Michigan, all over, from the east side of the state to the west side of the state, people visiting, coming to Lowell, Michigan to come check it out, to visit a new brewery. I think that's gonna happen again with Big Boiler Brewery coming in and it happens with food trucks. The two nights that we had the food trucks, people, because I already have an idea of seeing local faces and seeing new faces, and I bet you that night, there was 50% of the people in there were new faces. There was families coming in, there was couples coming in and they came because of the food truck that they hadn't experienced before. A lot of them were from out of town coming to visit Lowell for that night. So we, I think there are, there is information to say, hey, I'm not trying to compete with all these local restaurants. I've been working with a lot of local restaurants to figure out a way to do deliveries and that kind of thing. So it's not like we're looking to have a food truck every single night. It's an option, it's something fun, something unique to do and just to try something out, see if it works. It's been one of our top requests, saying, hey, are you gonna have some outside food? What can you do? So we were trying to solve that issue, that's what brought it up. It wasn't, originally wasn't even our original intent to do that, but we had a lot of requests for it and we thought it would be a fun way to get involved, something new with the community. And we still want to work out some things with some of the local restaurants to be able to have food come down as well and we've been working on that too. So again, thank you for taking your time, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bart Chambers, nine thirty, North Washington, and I own two seventeen West Main, a brick and mortar building here in town. The food trucks to me bring people to this town and we struggle desperately to get new faces and new people to this downtown. My business is very unique where we have more of a one-to-one conversation with clientele that comes into my building and my store. And we ask and I would dare say 70% of my clientele comes from the outside in. I, I know people that live in this town that have never stepped foot into my store and I rely heavily on outside sources to bring new revenue in. I pay taxes here, I get it, but it's, it's something I feel as a business owner that it's a new draw, it's a new way to get more money into the downtown area, whether they're trying to get my store, at your restaurant, at the bars, the gas stations, wherever. I just think it's a good thing and I think it's something we need to seriously look at. Thank you.
Brad Wade, one two nine nine one, Ryan Rich. I personally, as a resident in Lowell for the past 12 years, this is a wonderful, wonderful community and it's, and it's great to be a part of it and I love to see what happens with the Pink Arrow Projects and I love to see the turnouts with the parades, the Christmas through Lowell. It's wonderful. One thing that I have noticed as being a new business owner in town, with change, there's a lot of kickback and it's, I understand there, with change negativity is often associated, but with change comes growth. Culinary food trucks, they're traveling culinary hotspots. These places are like the Grateful Dead, Pink Floyd, they have followers. People will travel to see them, to experience them. And if you have people like Tyler just mentioned, coming from Coopersville, surrounding areas that are more than 15, 20 miles away because they have an opportunity to visit their food truck and then experience a great made beer, those people aren't just coming here, going to that food truck and leaving. They're spending money in their town, they're going to the shops, they're shopping locally. That is exactly what I support, locally owned small businesses. When those people come here, their revenue comes here, they spend money in their town. I highly respect what they did by, they had invitations for barbecue trucks to come in and with them working so closely with Main Street Barbecue, they were so kind as to decline. They have my respect, very nervous for speaking, but I just, I just want the town of Lowell to know, when new business comes in and money is spent here, those people aren't just visiting that truck. I own a business here now, I would love to see outside people come in and spend revenue here. Thank you.
Hi Dino.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lauren Angela. I am the owner of Ped Madder's Food Truck, which was the truck that was highly involved. Being an owner of a food truck, we're not looking to steal local business. We are looking for options for ourselves to partner with businesses. We parked at New Union and they got that idea from the other breweries that we park at. Like currently, right now, my truck is parked in Dutton at Ralton Brewing Company. We go out to Allendale, we go to Lansing, we go to Granville, we've been out to Rockford. I mean, we operate in a lot of different subsidiary areas and we are willing to cooperate with whatever regulations that you guys put into place and if you guys decide you don't want food trucks here, you won't ever see food trucks here. One of the cities we're not allowed to go to is Wyoming and it's a no food truck zone. I worked with the city of Grand Rapids on their regulations and setting up the ordinances there and we talked with the mayor and the city council and all of that and the regulations in Catwood are pretty fair as far as allowing us to park on private property. Their transient merchant fee is $100 a year. In Allendale, we have to pay a $60 every six months to be able to operate at the brewery out there. We are licensed by the health department, we are heavily insured, we do have the $2 million rider to be able to operate in the city of Grand Rapids. Any of the trucks that do come from the city of Grand Rapids that are operating have to go through a heavy fire inspection to make sure that our trucks are up to code, that we're not leaking propane, that there isn't any mechanical issues with the way that our trucks are set up. Food trucks are heavily regulated and all of the food trucks that are currently operating are meeting all of the requirements that are set up by the different city departments in areas. If you look at the statistics, food trucks' biggest competition is fast food, not sit-down restaurants. The places that we go to, we offer an option of convenience for their customers. Us parking at the brewery at New Union, we don't charge them to come out there. We park there hoping that, you know, people are gonna want food to go with their beer and because we're there, people tend to stay longer. They get another drink, they go to the gas station across the street. They, we personally have, what, 1,300 followers on Facebook and every time we go somewhere, we tell them every place we're going to be. So if we were coming to Lowell on a regular basis, we'd have a poster hanging in our window letting people know, this is the day we're gonna be here, this is the time you can find us. When we did come here, we got a lot of support from the foodie community in town and that is part of the reason why we were so busy the couple of nights that we were here is because not only did we put it out to our 1,500 followers, but 20,000 other people found out that we were going to be here because locals from Lowell stopped at a truck, posted it on their page and now everybody knows that there's food trucks in Lowell. On top of myself, I know of a couple of other trucks that would like to park at New Union come summertime. I gave them a list of 15 food trucks so that they have other options and there are, what, 25 food trucks in the west Michigan area and most of them, if they were asked, would be interested in setting up a day or two or helping you guys out with local community events. So if you guys have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them, but as far as a food truck owner goes, I'm not looking to steal business from a brick and mortar restaurant. If anything, I'm trying to steal business from McDonald's, which is sad to say and it's hard for me to compete.
Yeah, the question, so do you kind of sometimes schedule these events prior to going there? Because like, small communities, you're just not gonna have the foot traffic to make a lot of money, like Grand Rapids and the other communities like Detroit and Chicago. You got a lot of foot traffic, but in your smaller communities, you really don't have people just walking around where you're gonna make, so do you make those phone calls ahead of time to say?
We, we would schedule, like, if I was allowed to be at New Union, we'd schedule it today and I would book my dates for the next two months so that we, our business is developed on repetition. So like, we go to Ralton Brewing Company in Dutton on Tuesdays and Wednesday nights we go to Trailpoint Brewing Company in Allendale. We've left Thursday nights open for New Union with the hopes that we could come there. Friday nights, we go to a distillery in Grand Rapids and then Saturdays are usually saved for larger events and festivals and fairs and that sort of thing, but if we were to come, it would be on a regular basis. We would let people know that we're gonna be here on a certain day from this time to this time. Typically, we don't stay more than four hours, so it's just a short period of time.
And like you said, your clientele is these millennials who check their Facebook, Twitter and all this other stuff and generally, you're gonna, you're not gonna get the sit-down type customers?
Honestly, when we're going to the breweries, we get people who are brewery people and so if I'm at another brewery and they ask us where we're going, I tell them, you know, we're, we're at Trailpoint on Wednesday nights, we'd be at New Union on Thursday nights, we're at this brewery on this night. So we make sure that when we stop someplace, we let people know where we're going so they know where to find us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Do you share any of your revenue with the place that you go to?
Typically, no, we, we put it in the form of a permit. So if you guys had a permit that was $200 a year, we pay the $200 a year permit and then we would, we pay our state taxes because we charge sales tax on all of our foods. So we, we pay our state taxes and.
I just, you don't, you don't share the revenue, so the guy getting there is just to get you there to get a convenience to help his business, that's basically what it amounts to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, some of the, I heard the talk that some of our communities, local communities do regulate, do have programs. That tells me that maybe the state is not involved in this at all?
No, this is really not, I mean.
It's all local.
This is a local issue, local and county issue through the health department, but a number of communities are, are dealing with these ordinance. I know where I came from, we were working on ordinance there and to manage it and you're seeing more and more of this.
My, my son went to San Antonio and they had food trucks, just a massive amount of food trucks and it was the most enjoyable experience for him. So he had tremendous input on, when I was talking to him about it, but I do know I've done a little bit of research and LA in 2006 tried to restrict food trucks and a court overruled them.
Correct.
So we have to try carefully with whatever we decide, if we decide, and my recommendation is that we would table this for further.
Absolutely.
For further investigation.
I just want to add something too. A couple of years ago, the Michigan Municipal League, at one of their conferences, I don't know if you were there Jim, but I believe it was, Detroit, they actually, they did actually a lunch presentation where they, I wasn't at this, but I was told about it and they had, for the lunch, all the people who attended the conference, they went out to the food trucks and basically it was an educational thing for the, for the, for the county, for the elected officials, for the most part, to have them understand what they were doing in their city and how this was being managed.